Good afternoon. I am Trenes Rex, School Board Chair, and the Administrative Informal Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia is hereby convened at 4:17 PM on this 12th day of December 2023. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on schoolboard.vbschools.com/meeting/live, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. Thank you to those that have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, will you please announce those School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board chamber is Chair Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Manning, Ms. Martin, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Owens.
Thank you. So, our first thing under Board Administrative Matters and Reports, are there any Board members that need to say something? Ms. Melnick.
As many of you know, the beach bags program is near and dear to my heart. And yesterday, when I was there, I was talking to Renee, who does all of that, and told her that I would love to set up a time for the entire Board to go. You know, it'd be a great team building for this Board, but also an opportunity to see how many beach bags are packed and learn a little bit more about the program and what goes into that. And I thought you would like that. So if so, either just let me know tonight if you're interested, and I will get in touch with Renee. And a small fact, as we talk about budgets and the cost of items, a few years ago, it cost $2.25 to pack a beach bag for a student, and now it costs us $5.50. And so I'd love for you to learn more about it, and I know you will love it.
Okay, anyone else have anything? Okay. So, the first thing on our agenda of Admin Matters, leadership interest. Okay, we all know that's coming up, and so there'll be...Our first meeting in January is the 9th, where we will be voting for a new Chair and a new Vice Chair. Is there anybody interested or would like to say something about it tonight? This is not where we start. We will start that, actually, but if you're interested and you'd just like to share something tonight, you can. Okay, nobody? Okay, all right, so we're going to move on to scheduled meetings. Our remaining fiscal year for '24 is affirmed fiscal year '25 proposed. Look at your remaining, which is just this meeting. And you've seen the agenda, so you know what was added to that. Are there any questions on that? Okay. All right, so Dr. Robertson, you want to present what's coming up for the next quarter for January, February, and March?
We want to do that before teacher evaluations and level up again. Sure. All right, so Regina, can you pull that up?
It's on here twice. Yeah, you've got it. We've got it under Admin Matters, and then we've got it for D, Forecast of Regular School Board Meeting Topics.
Those are two different things. You were supposed to go over the list of the meetings that are coming up for the remainder of this year and for the upcoming '24-'25 year. Dr. Roberts is presenting the topics for the agenda.
Got you. Okay, so just the meetings that are coming up. Which...Do we have a list? Did you give me a list?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so our remaining meetings are January the 9th for '23-'24, January 23rd, our mini-retreat. It starts at 11:00 and ends at 3:30. And I was going to say something about that, too, in our governance, but I'll move further. February 6, 2024, special meeting for presentation of the SEON for the fiscal year 2024-'25, and our CIP fiscal year 2024-'25 through fiscal year 2030-'31. February 13th meeting, February 20th meeting, that's a special meeting. It's our special budget meeting in a CIP workshop. February 27th is our regular meeting, 2024. March 5th is a special meeting for the adoption of the budget for the fiscal year 2024-'25, and the CIP fiscal year 2024-'25 through fiscal year 2030-'31. March 12th is our regular meeting, 2024. March 26th is a regular meeting. April 16th, the third Tuesday, rather than our second, due to spring break. Okay? And then it will be April 30th, which will be the fifth Tuesday, due to the change of that for spring break. Okay, everybody got it? Okay, May 14th, 2024, May 28th, 2024, which is the day after Memorial Day. June 4th, 2024, special meeting for the superintendent's evaluation. June 10th, which is the second Monday, due to graduations, and June 25th, 2024. Okay? Okay, so the proposed meetings for '24-'25, for July 9th and 10th, 9th through 10th is our retreat. And we usually start on Monday and go to Tuesday, but this year, because Monday was something that was happening, I think it was staff, we're going Monday after the 4th. We're going to Tuesday and Wednesday, the 9th and the 10th, and there will be an abridged regular meeting on the 9th, like we usually do. Okay? And then our second meeting is July 23rd, 2024. For August, it's August 13th, 2024, and August 27th, 2024. For September, September 10th, 2024, September 24th, 2024, October 8th, 2024, October 22nd, 2024, November 12th, 2024, the day after Veterans Day, and November 26th, 2024. December 10th, the one meeting in December, 2024. And then our first meeting, January 14th, 2025, and that will be the reorganization meeting as well for '25. January 28th, 2025, February 4th, 2025, a special meeting for the presentation of the SEON for the fiscal year 2025-'26, and CIP fiscal year 2025-'26 through fiscal year 2030-'31. February 11th, 2025, is a regular school board meeting. February 18th, 2025, is our special meeting for the budget and the CIP workshop. February 25th is our regular meeting, 2024. March 5th is a special meeting for the adoption of the budget for the fiscal year 2024-'25, and the CIP fiscal year 2024-'25 through fiscal year 2030-'31. March 12th is our regular meeting in 2024. March 26th is a regular meeting. April 16th, the third Tuesday, rather than our second, due to spring break. Okay? And then it will be April 30th, which will be the fifth Tuesday, due to the change of that for spring break. Okay, everybody got it? Okay, May 14th, 2024, May 28th, 2024, which is the day after Memorial Day. June 4th, 2024, a special meeting for the superintendent's evaluation. June 10th, which is the second Monday, due to graduations, and June 25th, 2024. Okay? Okay, so the proposed meetings for '24-'25, for July 9th and 10th, 9th through 10th is our retreat. And we usually start on Monday and go to Tuesday, but this year, because Monday was something that was happening, I think it was staff, we're going Monday after the 4th. We're going to Tuesday and Wednesday, the 9th and the 10th, and there will be an abridged regular meeting on the 9th, like we usually do. Okay? And then our second meeting is July 23rd, 2024. For August, it's August 13th, 2024, and August 27th, 2024. For September, September 10th, 2024, September 24th, 2024, October 8th, 2024, October 22nd, 2024, November 12th, 2024, the day after Veterans Day, and November 26th, 2024. December 10th, the one meeting in December, 2024. And then our first meeting, January 14th, 2025, and that will be the reorganization meeting as well for '25. January 28th, 2025, February 4th, 2025, a special meeting for the presentation of the SEON fiscal year 2025-'26, and CIP fiscal year 2025-'26 through fiscal year 2030-'31. February 11th, 2025, is a regular school board meeting. February 18th, 2025, is our special meeting for the budget and the CIP workshop. February 25th, 2025, is our regular school board meeting. March 4th, 2025, a special meeting for the adoption of the budget for the fiscal year 2024-'26, and the CIP fiscal year 2024-'26 through fiscal year 2030-'31. February 11th, 2025, is a regular school board meeting. February 18th, 2025, is our special meeting for the budget and the CIP workshop. February 25th, 2025, is our regular school board meeting. March 4th, 2025, is a special meeting for the adoption of the budget fiscal year 2025-'26, and CIP fiscal year 2025-'26 through fiscal year 2030-'31. February 11th, 2025, is a regular school board meeting. February 18th, 2025, is our special meeting for the budget and the CIP workshop. February 25th, 2025, is our regular school board meeting. March 4th, 2025, is a special meeting for the adoption of the budget fiscal year 2025-'26, and CIP fiscal year 2025-'26 through fiscal year 2030-'31. Yes?
Do your microphone.
You mentioned March 4, but the print that I'm looking at shows March 5.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I'm glad you're looking at the calendar.
5 is correct.
March 5, yes. That was a...Thank you for bringing up that to us. Okay. March 11th, our second...Actually, our first meeting, first regular school board meeting in March, is March 11th, 2025. Our second one is March 25th, 2025. April 8th, 2025. April 22nd, 2025. May 13th, 2025. May 27th, 2025, which is the day after Memorial Day. June 3rd, 2024, that is our special meeting for the...Excuse me, 25...Slip of the key there. Special meeting for September, our superintendent's evaluation. And then our regular meeting in June is June 9th, 2025, the second Monday because of graduation. June 24th, 2025, excuse me, 25th. Yeah, that was another typo, guys. Okay.
Again, this is just a draft. I'll make those corrections, but I do think it is January 24th of 2025 is the Tuesday, is the second Tuesday.
Oh, not the 28th.
Not the 28th?
June 20...In 2025, it is on June 24th is the second Tuesday.
Okay. You meant June or January? Because first you said January. I'm sorry.
June 24th of 2025 is the second Tuesday of that month.
It's not the 25th. Okay, thank you. So you have that, right? The 9th is the Monday because of graduation. Remember, this was 2025, the second round, guys. Okay? Thank you.
And remember, that doesn't include the six meetings we just added for January.
Okay. I am also, for Admin Matters, I'm passing around Dr. Robertson's meetings with you for January, our new year, January 12th. It starts in January 12th, 2024, so you'll get that sign-up sheet. Okay, so real quick, we met, the Governance Committee met, and you know, one of the things that I wanted to remind you of, which I just did in our review of the calendar, was that we were going to have our mini-retreat on January...Let me find these dates here. 23rd, excuse me, 23rd. We're going to start at 11. It'll be lunch starting then. And basically, the thing that we're going to be covering for this mini-retreat is the process for ODS for this year. Okay? We're not going to go into the five-year ODS forecast yet, because that's going to take much longer. We are going to have...We've invited an expert that we had before, that has worked with us before with ODS. He's going to come and speak and share what knowledge he has on choosing students for the ODS process. It was originally talked about having...Talking about the schools and the populations of the schools, but we had the BUC meeting the other day, Mr. Culpepper, and I don't think we're going to need to talk about it, because from what their presentation was, and when is that going to be given, your presentation?
That'll be at the end of March. Is that correct, Mr. Freeman? End of March will be the brief from the recommendations in the box. I was going to discuss at the end of the meeting here today, when you talk about committees, I was going to just briefly touch on what we talked about.
Right, yeah, and so you'll do that. But so we really aren't going to cover that in the mini-retreat, guys. I think the time that we are going to spend will need to be with ODS, okay? If there's something that comes up that we really have to, then I'll let you guys know. But for right now, that's what we're going to do. Okay?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
If I can offer, just for your consideration, our presentation for the ODS selection process, which will also, after we get that concluded, will give you a preview of the timeline and process for the five-year plan. We'll probably need about two hours. I don't think we need more than two hours. And I also think you might want to consider identifying topics for the summer retreat. So you could add that as a second topic. But if the total time that takes is roughly two and a half hours, we wanted to be able to serve you lunch, I think you could probably get away with...
Starting at 12?
Starting at 12.
Okay.
We start with lunch at 12.
Instead of starting at 11 for the mini-retreat, yeah, on the 23rd, start at 12 because of what he's thinking with our...The ODS presentation they're going to do. And that includes with Dr. Plunkert, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I think it would also provide time, again, for the Board to start thinking about what summer topics that they'd like to talk about in the retreat.
Okay. Is everybody good with that? So let's put that on your calendars for 12 instead of 11. Okay? Ms. Melnick?
I certainly can eat before I go, but you said lunch, so do...Just advise, please. Are you providing lunch or not?
Yes, we're going to provide a box lunch.
Okay, so we should come early and eat, or are we eating and listening?
No, we can start at 12, and you can eat then.
Well, I think...
I don't think you're going to need that much time.
Yeah, when I was factoring in the time, I figured if you came in at 12 and 8, we could start the meeting at 12:30 and still have plenty of time.
Okay.
To be able to get you done, to have a break before the meeting at 4.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Okay. So 12 o'clock, is that good with everybody?
Okay.
Okay. Let's see, what else? Also, for the Governance Committee, and I feel like this is important with Admin Matters, rather than doing it at the committee reports, because there's so much with governance that I thought that would do...I would do it now with Admin Matters instead of at the end. There's still a request for information on broadcasting the School Board Committee meetings, and Mr. Din is working on that for us to get the information with where we'd have the meetings, where they have to be had, the cost, and all of that's involved with VBTV. Okay? The school administration building renovations update, the software updates, that you've got that information, that we're changing that, the training for that. And we won't start our first meeting with the new software information, software that we're going to use for our meetings until January 23rd. Okay? And let's see. Oh, Citizen Advisory Committee process and dates for 2024. These meeting days will be put on the app, on the application. Ms. Lynetti has come up with a new application, so the meeting dates for these committees will be put on the application for people that want to apply for those committees. So they'll see what are the regular meeting dates these committees meet. That will be helpful for people. And she's going to start that process earlier than we started it last year. Last year, it was started a little later. I think in January, at the end part of January, she's going to...We're going to start that. So they'll have more time to look at it, and they'll have more time to look at it. Want to add anything to that, Ms. Lynetti?
We want to make sure you had an adequate time for applicants to get in. The anticipation was you would get the applications back before...
April the 8th, 2025, April the 22nd, 2025, May 13th, 2025, May 27th, 2025, which is the day after Memorial Day, June 3rd, 2024, that is our special meeting for the, excuse me, 25. Slip of the key there. Special meeting for September, our superintendent's evaluation. And then our regular meeting in June is June 9th, 2025, the second Monday because of graduation, June 24th, 2025. Excuse me, 25th, yeah, that was another typo, guys. Okay.
Again, this is just a draft, I'll make those corrections, but I do think it is January 24th of 2025 is the Tuesday, is the second Tuesday.
Oh, not the 28th.
Not the 28th?
June 20, in 2025, it is on June 24th is the second Tuesday.
Okay. You meant June or, or January, because you, first you said January, I'm sorry.
June 24th of 2025 is the second Tuesday of that month.
It's not the 25th, okay, thank you. So you have that, right? The 9th is the Monday because of graduation. Remember, this was 2025, the second round, guys, okay? Thank you. And remember, that doesn't include the six meetings we just added for January. Okay, um, I am also, uh, for admin matters, I'm passing around, uh, Dr. Robertson's, um, meetings with you for January, our new year, January 12th, the tw, starts in January 12th, 2024, so you'll get that sign up sheet. Okay, so, real quick, the, um, we met, the Governance Committee met, and, you know, one of the things that I wanted to remind you of, which I just did in our review of the calendar, was that we were going to have, um, our, um, mini-retreat in, on, um, January. Let me find these dates here. 23rd, excuse me, 23rd, we're gonna start at 11, it'll be, uh, lunch starting then. And basically, the, the thing that we're gonna be covering for this mini-retreat is the process for ODS for this year, okay? We're not gonna go into the five-year ODS forecast yet, because that's gonna take much longer. Um, we are going to have, um, we've invited a, um, expert that we had before, that has worked with, with, um, with us before with ODS, he's gonna come and speak and share, um, what knowledge he has on, uh, choosing students for the ODS, ODS process. It was originally talked about having, um, talking about the schools and the populations of the schools, but I, we had the BUC meeting the other day, uh, Mr. Culpepper, and I, I don't think we're gonna need to talk about it, because from what their presentation was, and when do you, when is that gonna be given, your presentation?
That'll be at the, uh, the end of March, is that correct, uh, Mr. Freeman? End of March will be the, uh, the brief from the, uh, the results, from the recommendations of the book. I was gonna discuss at the end of the meeting here today, when you talk about committees, I was gonna just briefly touch on what we talked about.
Right, yeah, and so you'll, you'll do that, but, so we, we really aren't gonna cover that in the mini-retreat, guys. I think, I think the time that we are gonna spend will need to be with ODS, okay? If there's something that comes up that we really have to, then I'll, I'll let you guys know. But for right now, that's what we're gonna do, okay? Um, yes.
If I can offer, um, uh, just for your consideration, our presentation for the ODS selection process, which will also, after we get that concluded, will give you a preview of the timeline and process for the five-year plan. We'll probably need about two hours. I don't think we need more than two hours. And I also think you might wanna consider, um, identifying topics for the summer retreat. So you could add that as a second topic. But if, if, if the total time that takes is roughly two and a half hours, we wanted to be able to serve you lunch, you, I, I think you could probably get away with.
Starting at 12?
Starting at 12.
Okay.
We start with lunch at 12.
Instead of starting at 11 for the mini-retreat, uh, that, yeah.
January 23rd.
On the 23rd, start at 12 because of what he's thinking with our, um, the ODS, uh, presentation they're gonna do. And that, and that includes with Dr. Plunkert too, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I think it would also provide time, again, for the board to start thinking about what summer topics that they'd like to talk about in the retreat.
Okay. Is everybody good with that? So let's, um, put that on your calendars for 12 instead of 11, okay? Ms. Nunnick.
I mean, I certainly can eat before I go, but you said lunch, so do, just advise, please. Uh, are you providing lunch or not?
Yes, yes, we're gonna provide a box lunch.
Okay, so, so we should come early and eat, or are we eating and listening?
No, we can start at 12, and you can eat then.
Well, I think, I think.
I don't think you're gonna need that much time.
Yeah, when I was factoring in the, the time, I figured if you came in at 12 and 8, we could start the meeting at 12:30 and still have plenty of time.
Okay.
To be able to get you done, to have a, a break before the meeting at 4.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay.
Okay. So, 12 o'clock, is that good with everybody? Okay, um. Let's see, what else? For the, also, um, for the Governance Committee, and I feel like this is important with admin matters, rather than doing it at the committee reports, because there's, there's so much with governance that I thought that would do, I would do it now with admin matters instead of at the end. There's still a request for information on broadcasting the school board committee meetings, and, um, Mr. Din is working on that for us to get the information with, um, where we'd have the meetings, where they have to be had, the cost, and, and all of that's involved with VVTV, okay? The school admin, administration building renovations update, the, uh, software updates that, uh, you got that information, that we're changing that, that, um, the training for that. And, and we won't start our first meeting with the new, um, software, uh, information, uh, software that we're gonna use for our meetings until January 23rd, okay? Um, and let's see. Oh, Citizen Advisory Committee process and dates for 2024. These meeting days will be put on the app, on the application. That, um, Ms. Lynetti has come up with a new application, so the meeting dates for these committees will be put on the application for people that want to apply for those committees. So they'll see what are the regular meeting dates these committees meet. That will be helpful for people. And, um, she's gonna start that process earlier than we started it last year. Last year, it was started a little later. I think in January, at the end part of January, she's gonna, we're gonna start that. So they'll have, we'll have more time to look at it, and they'll have more time to look at it. You wanna add anything to that, um, Ms. Lynetti?
We wanna make sure you had an adequate time for applicants to get it in anticipation, was you would get the applications back before spring break, which would give us time to assemble it, then if you remember your process, you come in and take a look at it, but your committees also come in and take a look at that, they give you recommendations, so this will give us a little bit more time, give us April and May, and then you're ready by the end of May, beginning of June to make appointments.
Okay, and one last thing. One of our Governance Committee, um, members would like, brought up a good idea, and, um, she's getting with Ms. Lynetti, the expectations for future school board members. So it's on our website. It's gonna be put on our website, we're talking about putting it on our website, a list of the expectations of school board members for just the general knowledge for the general public, because not everybody knows what we do. And so we thought that it would be a, a, a good idea, and everybody agreed with that, to put that information on our website, the amount of, you know, so they could see the amount of time it takes before people start looking at the interest in running. I think, um, it was a good idea, we had a good discussion about it, that, um, that would be great to put on there, so. Did you wanna say any more about that, Ms. Anderson? Do you wanna add anything to that, and then Ms. Manning?
So after people are elected, it's a little late to find out exactly what the job entails. So our idea is just to put like a little question on our website that says, are you thinking about running for school board? Here are some possib, possible, some possibly, some things that you may have, be required to do. There are certain things that there, that we're required to do, and then there are certain things that we, that you may be required to do. So we just thought it would be a good idea, so that way people could go to the website, they could check it out, and it, we don't have it up there yet, but we're, um, we're developing those ideas, and if anybody wants to contact me with, uh, their thoughts on it, um, please feel free to call me.
Okay, Ms. Manning?
Yeah, I was gonna suggest, could the board, um, see what the ideas are that are going on the website so that we could review it and, and give input before it goes on the.
Yeah, before we put it on there, you guys will definitely see it, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but it was just an, uh, a suggestion, so we said, it sounded good, and yeah, she'll share that with us.
Yeah, it'd be helpful, things that you wish you had known before you ran, that would be helpful for us.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, any, so that's it. I do have one more thing that I think I should do during admin matters, and I want Mrs. Toni Otto to please come up. Because it's faster for her to come up than me to go down. And you wanna get up and move, right? So, I want to present this Christmas present to you from all of us with much love and thankfulness. Thank you so much. You are definitely a Christmas present to us. That was our surprise present to you, right? Okay, so let's move on to our teacher evaluation. Welcome, Mr. Delaney. And our Chief of Schools. And, um, also, Mr. Jamison will be taking part in this, our Executive Director for the Office of Student Support Services. That will come up later with the, um, Level of Virginia, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Din. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, School Board Members and Dr. Robertson. You're gonna receive an information on the teacher evaluation process. Prior to outlining the purpose of this presentation, it's important to share that effectively evaluating teachers is really a multiple, multiple department endeavor between the Departments of School Leadership, Human Resources, and Teaching and Learning. Although the focus of this brief is on teachers, I'd like to note that our principals, assistant principals, and other instructional staff are evaluated using the same process and same standards. You've also heard at times the term Talent Ed in your conversations with teachers or central staff. Talent Ed is the electronic platform that we use for our teacher evaluations, it actually houses them. It was first introduced in 2012 to adhere to the evaluation guidelines. The VDOE implemented for the 2012-13 school year, and the initial evaluation rubric was developed in 2012 as well. So the purpose of this presentation is to really identify the Virginia Department of Education, you'll hear me say VDOE, standards and ratings for teacher evaluations, demonstrate how VBCPS utilizes VDOE standards to evaluate teachers, and share how we've incorporated the VDOE cultural responsive teaching and equitable practices requirement into our existing teacher evaluation process. We adhere to the Virginia Department of Education's guidelines for uniform performance standards and evaluation criteria for teachers, administrators, and superintendents as required in the Code of Virginia. The Board of Education is responsible for establishing teacher guidelines, including performance standards and evaluation cri, criteria to assist school divisions in implementing educator evaluation systems. On the slide, you will note the performance standards required by the VDOE. This slide should look somewhat familiar, Ms. Calucci included these performance standards in a previous presentation on curriculum support in response to division-wide data. From the eight VDOE standards listed on the previous slide, here are three of the standard definitions which the VDOE requires school divisions to use. Just take a moment to review those. The VDOE also provides performance ratings that school divisions are required to follow. You can see the language that is associated with each rating. The definition of each performance standard, such as the ones you saw on the previous slide, are used for all effective ratings. These ratings over time can be modified by the VDOE, the original, for example, the original 2012 ratings were listed as exemplary, proficient, developing needs improvement, and unacceptable. VBCPS uses the standard and ratings to develop performance rubrics for teachers. So if you look at the screen here, this is really clipped from the top of a teacher rubric for Standard 1 of professional knowledge. It's really important to note that the effective rating is the expected level of performance. So we're gonna look at the state ratings more closely using the newest VDOE standard and share how we incorporated this requirement into our existing teacher evaluation process. The VDOE added this standard, which is now Standard 6, culturally responsive teaching and equitable practices to the evaluation standard to be implemented last year in the 2022-23 school year. The state's definition is displayed here. Once we received this definition, a process was developed to insert this into the existing evaluation rubric. I'd like to highlight the word on the screen, commitment. Virginia Beach City Public Schools has demonstrated this commitment through our strategic plan, the Equity Plan, our graduate profile, the current Strategic Action Agenda, and in, and it exists in several policies and regulations. Fostering inclusive, collaborative, and welcoming classroom environments has been an instructional expectation for many years in our school division. On the screen is a copy of the current rubric that we use to evaluate a teacher on the culturally responsive teaching and equitable practices standard. You'll note at the top of the slide, the definition provided by the VDOE, as well as the same definition in the effective rating. In developing the rubric for this standard, we used a collaborative process to analyze the new definition and outline the criteria for the ratings listed as 1, 2, and 3 on the left side of the rubric. We identified the existing components on the previous evaluation rubric that were appropriate to transfer to this standard. So let me repeat that, we utilized the existing rubric, knowing that we've had this expectation for years, and drew some of those elements and incorporated it into this standard. So essentially, you're not seeing something that's drastically new. Uh, we were being very cognizant of the pressure this would put on teachers from a professional development standpoint, and also, we wanted to ensure that we should maintain that expectation of what we've previously done. So let's take a look at the three areas evaluated in the rubric to illustrate this connection. If you look at the far-left col, column where the competency categories are listed, look at the language in number 1, and then look at the effective rating. Establishing meaningful relationships for all students and encourages appropriate student-to-student relationships. As you look at the effective rating circled in red, you will see that connection. In the previous evaluation rubric, similar language was included in the standard of instructional delivery, which stated at that time, uses appropriate protocols and cooperative learning structures to facilitate effective collaboration. Mrs. Calucci shared in a previous school board meeting examples how teachers work to incorporate cooperative learning projects and learning experiences into daily instruction to build relationships between students, consider multiple perspectives, and help students learn the skills needed to work with people from diverse backgrounds. It's also important to note that this statement is supporting the graduate profile in the areas of communicators and collaborators. Let's take a look at number 2. Under effective, it states selects and utilizes resources that are culturally diverse and respectful of student differences. This is the exact same language that was used in the previous rubric under the standard of learning environment. This aligns the graduate profile in the area of cross-culturally competent. Furthermore, it's included in Compass to 2025 under the area of educational excellence as an action step, essentially saying incorporation of multiple, multicultural materials and resources in the curriculum at all levels. Finally, in number 3, the criteria under effective is in direct alignment to our Strategic Action Agenda and Equity Plan as it applies to tiered interventions of support. This criteria previously was addressed through assessment of learning standard and the student academic progress standard. As you know, we're a data-driven decision-making organization at all levels, and that remains the expectation with all of our staff. I'd also like, like to share that in order to move teachers to the effective rating or the highly effective rating, professional learning is offered through the Office of Professional Growth and Innovation and the Department of Teaching and Learning. Finally, in 2021, the Virginia Assembly passed Senate Bill 1196 and House Bill 1904, which addresses cultural competence. The new law states that every person seeking an initial license or renewal of a license shall complete training in cultural competency, and each school board employee holding a license complete cultural competency training at least every two years, and must complete at least one such training, we had to do this last year, at the beginning of the 22-23 school year. During the informational session of the board meeting later tonight, Ty Harris, Director of Edu, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, will be given an update on the work taking place in his office. He will highlight the efforts of central support staff and teachers on meeting the VDOE teacher certification requirements for cultural competency practices. So any questions in that area might be best served to, to leave until his presentation. I share this slide here because I presented this to you with Mrs. Calucci at the September 26th board meeting. In that presentation, we shared how we work with building leaders on ensuring alignment between Compass to 2025, the Strategic Action Agenda, the school-based plan for continuous improvement, the school-based concept map, as well as all the way down to classroom observations and feedback. Although it is not stated as the purpose of this presentation, examples of this alignment were provided. We believe focusing on the strategic alignment has positive impact on student and school outcomes. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Milnich?
So teachers have been evaluated forever. So aside from the addition of Standard 6, Standard 6, how has teacher evaluations changed over the years? Like, say, from when I was being observed in 1990?
I'll use my own example as a teacher, if that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We don't want to show age, I guess, on my end.
Well, I just aged us.
When I was first starting teaching as, as a teacher, evaluations in the early 90s into the 2000s, it was not nearly as comprehensive as it is today. You'd get observed a few times, you're on an evaluation schedule, and at that time, you were typically someone on a rating scale of effectiveness, 1 through 4 was what went on in that end. When the VDOE standards came out in 2012, when we adopted Talent Ed, that's really where you saw the elevation of the teacher evaluation pro, process around a very distinct rubric of standards and categories. You saw a small component of that rubric. So if you look at that Standard 6 rubric, there is eight other standards that are in the evaluation rubric for a teacher that look very similar to what you see here. So former educators up there can look and go, I did not go through that process as a teacher. Initially, as an assistant principal, I did not go through that process, and then I eventually was adopted as I became a principal and went through that process, which was much more extensive. So it's, I go back to that final slide. That's why it's so important to that alignment, so that teachers are understanding that all of these things are connected in their practices. If you really read through, and I'm not asking that you do, but if you really read through that rubric, you would see all those expectations to, to meet the overriding goals of the school division. Hope that answers it.
Yeah, well, it does, kind of, um, but I would imagine that for many, many teachers, the equitable practices have always been in place. That's just how so many people are. I understand, it's a standard now. Um, but do we have a higher percentage of teachers who are now on, um, improvement plans, or? So that's kind of my question in this retention and.
I'd have to get that answer for you at another time, but one of the things I would share with you when we talked about that funnel. If you recall back when we did that presentation, I used the term decoupling evaluation from observation.
Okay.
So how are we, and, and going back to your question of how we were evaluated as teachers, I did not view my administrators at time as coaches of my performance.
Correct, yes.
Now we are, I think they're viewing them as coaches of those performance. Much of what you were saying is the reason why. Principals and administrators know that if I don't improve this individual's performance, it doesn't mean I have somebody on the back end that's gonna fill it and do that. As a principal, I used to say, they're not lined up on Virginia Beach Boulevard to walk in and take over this position, so we have to coach them to improvement. When I first started teaching, it was shut your door, you're in charge. Those days are no longer exist, and I did share a number in the presentation earlier in the year that we, you know, just from an observation standpoint, we did over 12,500 observations of teachers administratively last year. I don't think I was observed sometimes for two or three straight years as a teacher in 1995.
And that, I mean, that is true.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure I wasn't speaking out of turn.
Or you had a quick, or you had a quick walkthrough, and you got a smiley face that said, great job.
Yes.
But, um, so clearly, teaching has changed, the evaluation process has changed, and we can talk offline then again about.
Yeah, but I just wanna reiterate the point that the current climate we're in, the evaluation is really to try and encourage improvement.
Got it.
Uh, because we, we recognize we need to really help our teachers that are, that maybe aren't coming with the same level of preparation that they were 30 years ago either. So those are things that we're really working on is, how are we coaching them to improve performance?
Okay.
And this does help, that, that rubric does help in some instances, if you target it well. You don't wanna overwhelm them with all eight standards in a large rubric.
Yeah.
If you target specific areas, it seems to work well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Franklin?
Thank you. Mr. Delaney, just out of curiosity, so some of this seems somewhat subjective, in the sense that, for example, so, for example, you know, we have schools, particularly Title I, for example, that, you know, some of these kids are facing food insecurity, housing insecurity, and different things that certainly impact, for example, like the student-to-student interactions. You know, and, and I understand that we have to have a baseline to create an effective rubric, so to speak. But, um, I guess my question is, when you're looking at teacher evaluations, you know, quite frankly, I think we all on the board have seen that certain schools have larger incidents of, of students that come before us. So how is a teacher, um, or their evaluation, how is that impacted by things that are somewhat out of their control, for example? I mean, you know, some schools just have a larger incident of, of those type of insecurities, and, and, and situations where students are, are not getting along. and situations where students are not getting along, let's put it that way.
Yeah, I'm going to try to answer your question because it varies by what incident you're speaking of. But if you look at, we really approach this from a support perspective. Going back to Ms. Melnick's question, again, 30 years ago, you were really working in isolation often as a teacher compared to today.
Okay.
So, in our, several of our, if you're using Title I schools as an example, and, you know, I know you're not saying that they're misbehaving in those, but you know, you're asking about the challenges that exist there.
Sure.
They sometimes have more resources around coaches, resources around support staff, resource around professional development. Ms. Silverman, who presented at the last meeting, really does a fantastic job with our Title I schools on what do you need to support teachers? So it does become a very comprehensive approach to supporting all of those needs. Mr. Jamison talks often about the student support process, student response team. It is very collective when we have that with our school counseling department. I can go on and on. So when we look at those behavioral issues, this is why we say we need to get in classrooms and observe that. Is it a teacher issue with classroom management? Do they have effective learning plans? Do they execute it effectively? Is it aligned to the standards? Have they clearly communicated the purpose? Or is it a student's misbehavior that we need to assist them with?
Okay. And that's all put into that subjectivity of the evaluation.
Correct, that's right.
Okay, and then we would say that because of those additional supports in those type of schools, it kind of levels out the ability to make a very equal type of evaluation across the board in terms of the model.
You work, the rubric provides the level for expectation of consistency.
Okay.
And that's what it provides to remove that subjectivity. But, for example, what I will share with you is, to be exemplary in a category, you have to be able to hit every one of those things in that competency. To hit effective, you have to hit all of those. So some, like, you look at professionalism, for example, there's a competency there that says you have to provide professional development or engage in a conference. Well, in some instances, it's no fault of the teacher or the administrator. That may not happen, but I'm not going to mark you as at the highest level because of that. The rubric is designed to bring that level of consistency.
Okay.
But any of us that have evaluated folks, sometimes it's not always the case.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
So, we continue to hear from teachers talking about Talent Ed. Could you go into a little bit more in-depth than that? And then also, is there any way that we can streamline anything that has to do with Talent Ed? I know that you said that it was implemented in 2012 by VDOE. Do we have any control over that whatsoever on a local level?
VDOE did not implement Talent Ed. We utilize that platform, and we have made adjustments to what has been required in Talent Ed several times.
Okay.
So, for example, early on, teachers had to do what we call a formative option and pick a couple of those tasks that they would complete during the year. That's no longer an expectation. So it has been streamlined down to some areas. There is an expectation that they set goals for the year.
Yes.
And sometimes that's what teachers have said, "Why am I setting these goals if I'm not getting direct feedback on those goals?" So we work with our leaders to say, "Work with your staff and the goals you're setting." If we're working as a third-grade team, sometimes it's important to have common third-grade goals. But to Ms. Franklin's point, if I have a different student population in my third-grade class, I want to acknowledge that in my data.
Okay.
We want those teacher goals to align with the plan for continuous improvement goals of the school, to align with the goals of the Compass to 2025. So I think we've worked really hard to streamline those processes. Yeah, I'd have to give you exact numbers on what teacher requirements are, but it's not nearly as significant as it was a few years ago. Principals have a significant number of requirements in there to work with teachers on from an evaluation standpoint. As a former principal, there's times I had nine to 10 things to do for a probationary one teacher. So you try to make that a very collaborative effort through Talent Ed. But it's the platform we utilize with certain timelines and expectations. Try to adhere to those timelines because if we don't, then at the end of the year, we're having people kind of hustle through some things. So we do have some timelines of expectations of completion. For your final point, you've asked us from a teacher perspective, we set some of those timelines to align with the calendar of, hey, there's a staff day, let's give them an opportunity to finalize their goals after they've given their assessments and others, to really formulate what those goals should look like.
Is there any thought about doing any professional development in the summer to help, especially helping some of the newer teachers with these Talent Ed goals?
I believe it's part of Tocquey, my college on Tocquey. Teacher orientation goes through the Talent Ed process of what's there. We ask our principals to work with their staff when they come back for In-Service Week, mentors to work with new teachers. So we do provide that opportunity for teacher, new teachers to get that level of support. And then our principals are expected to meet with their new teachers to walk them through what the Talent Ed process is.
Yeah, because I certainly don't want to lose a teacher because they're upset over not meeting their goals for the year, or not having enough time. I know that teachers are very stressed in September to get these things in place. And I get it that we have to have a timeline to start it.
If I can just share, Ms. Anderson, on that point, our principals are very aware of that stress. If you take that entire rubric, eight standards, you saw one page, it's about eight pages.
Right.
So they work very carefully with new teachers on, "Don't get overwhelmed by this. We need you to plan, teach, know your curriculum, get to know your kids, form those relationships, and we'll work through this throughout the year." They're pretty savvy at how to remove that stress. Now, you know, as a former teacher, teachers tend to internalize that stress and don't always heed that request, but we work very hard to make sure it does not overwhelm them through the process.
Yeah, I just, we hear a lot about it, especially in September and the beginning of October. But, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Callan?
Playing off of the comments that were made a few moments ago from the board in reference to having a website so that candidates for school board might have an idea of what awaits them. I would have greatly appreciated that website. And one of the interesting areas that I've been confronted with by being on the board is the introduction to the lexicon of terminology, one of which I use hardly ever, but I chuckle every time I use it, the word pedagogy, which sounds like just a teaching process, but we don't use teaching process, we use pedagogy. So with that as an example...
Please don't ask me to define it.
Don't worry, don't worry.
Thank you, thank you.
The point of my commentary has to do with looking at standard number six, and you see something is called culturally responsive teaching. And I furrow my brow, and I say, "Well, I know that as a melting pot of the world, the United States is a very diverse combination of ethnicities. But aren't we really trying to create students who have a grounding educationally in a culture that's not representative of where their ancestry came from? Mine was Ireland, as an example. But aren't we really trying to establish them with one Central American culture as opposed to the implied message to me? And when I read this term culturally responsive teaching, it sounds like we do different things with different groups of people. And aren't we, I know this is not your issue, it seems to be an extension of the Virginia Department of Education, but it just strikes me as we're more sprinkling apart, if you will, than pulling everybody together and creating a central culture that we're all looking to adhere to, i.e. the American culture. Just your thoughts?
My quick thought on that is a couple of things. One, we have several curriculum coursework that kind of hits that American culture when you look at our civics education, you look at American history that's taught. It's interesting when you go back and you look at our regulations and policies. So if you looked at Regulation 6-20.1, I had a feeling a question might come up similar. And this was done in 1991 in Virginia Beach. And it says, "In order to develop an appreciation of other cultures, opportunities for multicultural experiences are encouraged." And if you go a little bit further down in that regulation, it talks about the importance of American civic engagement and our own cultural values. So it is supported in our educational standpoint. When you look at the inclusion of this standard, I don't think it then excludes what you're asking about, is the importance of having civic understanding, understanding of American history, understanding of what's made this country so great, that that is a component of that, not necessarily standard, but of our history of how we develop our curriculum. Hope that helps. I mean, I think back to the Bird Neck Choral Concert on Veterans Day, you know, where they're singing patriotic songs to our military folks and seeing how proud the military members that were there. It got me goosebumps thinking back to being a young student at College Park Elementary singing patriotic songs. So it still occurs, but there's also this component of, we've got a transient population from a variety of cultures that in order for them to connect to that curriculum, we have to create experiences that kind of allow us to understand the cultures they're in. It's also supporting our graduate profile as cultural awareness, so it is something that has been stimulated throughout our time in strategic planning and so on. It's kind of a long-winded answer, but I look back at that regulation, I found it interesting. You're welcome.
Ms. Melnick?
Circling back to Talent Ed, please do not take this as me being flippant or questioning the division, but since we kind of control that and our teachers, you know, you specifically said principals recognize the amount of work that is and the amount of time that takes and the stressors of our educators. My question is, are anybody's goals really different? Like, we're all working, teachers work collaboratively. That's certainly a goal, and they all have it. They want all of their students to be successful. They want their students to embrace learning, and I could go through a whole host of things, but my question, I guess, really is, is that really, is it really necessary? I mean, honestly, my goal as a first-grade teacher was really to not have to wait till I got home to go to the bathroom, right? Like, and I'm not saying that to be flippant, I'm saying like...
I'm following you.
Right? And so, I wonder, with all that we do and all of the collaborative planning that we do and just collaboration in general that happens, like today at Green Run Elementary, there was, you know, they take turns meeting as grade levels for an entire day. And that's so good to see, and it's good to see them working together like that. Do we actually, uh-oh, I feel like Ralphie who said the bad word in the Christmas story.
Well...
Is it necessary that, I mean...
Yeah, I would say it is. And what I would point you back to is the presentations we've done on data. When we start looking at students that aren't performing at the highest levels compared to other students, take our special education population. Some of these are federal standards, some of them are state standards. We have to really hone into those specifics of data. You're talking big-picture goals, so if I said...
No, but I'm not, though. And I don't mean to interrupt you, but when I walk into the room at Green Run where I keep my cart, that is a data-filled room. It's like a war, I call it the war room. And there are children's names up there and data points that, you know, that drive the work, and I see goals in there. I see that. And so I just was just, and we do hear a lot about Talent Ed, and that's why I'm bringing this up. Like, that is continuous with the collaboration around students who are not performing and the work that goes behind bringing all that up. And, but I only ask because you said principals recognize the stress that that brings teachers, and you also said it's kind of something that we own. I thought it was a state requirement.
Talent Ed is our program, but do you want to talk to the state?
Yeah, that's what I need to know about, sorry.
And I only stepped up because Talent Ed is housed in our office, Human Resources, and the goal-setting piece is a VDOE requirement. And so, we have the conversation, and I understand when you indicated, you know, as a teacher, your goal was, you know, probably to eat lunch and be able to use the restroom.
Yeah, and go to the bathroom, right.
The state requires just a teeny bit more around goal-setting.
I said I was being flippant, you know, I'm sorry.
Understood, but listen, I understand. I have that conversation all the time with my medical team in terms of, that's why I don't drink a lot of water.
Right.
So, it goes back to, one, it is a requirement, and, two, it aligns with our evaluation rubric when you're looking at student achievement. And so although we house all of our documents in Talent Ed, because that's really what it is, back in the day, and I go back to what Mr. Delaney indicated, you know, you would basically scan or email or send your packet of evaluations down to Human Resources. This is two or three evaluations for 10,000-plus individuals, hence the numerous file cabinets that you used to have. So Talent Ed really is just to store those evaluations. And at the end of the year, in HR, we have to evaluate and ensure that all of our teachers were assessed, and then our superintendent has to sign off on it. So it's the mechanism that allows us to track it. I was thinking back to when Talent Ed was first introduced. As a probationary teacher, you had about 26 tasks. And believe me, as a principal at Tallwood High School, I had to oversee all those tasks for 200, almost 200 employees. It's barely six now. So they come in, teachers come in, they set their goals, they evaluate at the semester time in the end of the year, and dependent upon their probationary status, they're either evaluated, and that means classroom observation, anywhere between one to three times a year. And even now, that's on an alternating-year basis once you hit continuing contract. And I say that because I understand when our staff says, "Why do I have to do this?" But what organization do you know of that would not require their staff to set goals? How do you know at the end of the year whether or not you are seeing success? And I say this not to be flippant, it is not overwhelming. And I entertain that conversation with anyone who would like to bring it to us. Now, couldn't I say that back in 2012? Because I'm pretty confident, I raised my hand and said, "Oh, my God, how am I supposed to keep track of all of this?" But because we listen to the feedback of our teacher assembly, all the groups that Dr. Robertson meet with, we have scaled that down to literally the bare minimum requirements.
Okay, so you're saying it's much more manageable?
Entirely.
Okay.
Entirely.
Okay, then I'm, okay.
But it is required by VDOE.
Okay, okay, and that's the piece I really wanted to hear, because what I heard was we own it, but I understand what you're saying now, and I'm good, thank you.
I have to say, I remember when John Mira started Talent Ed. So Talent Ed is our system in Virginia Beach that we use to respond to what VDOE is expecting from our teachers. I remember the year it started, so. Okay, Ms...
Martin.
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I address Mr. Callan, please?
Yes.
So, Mr. Callan, let me give an example of why it's really important that we acknowledge a student's cultural background. From my own personal experience, when I learned in middle school the actual realities of World War II and what my mother went through, but then I also took civics, and I learned about what it meant to be an American and the incredible opportunity that was, it really helped me connect the dots. Knowing that my teachers were aware of my family's history when they were teaching that history and then introducing me to American civics was really, really important. One of my most incredible memories with this is in kindergarten. I showed up in kindergarten with a German accent. I couldn't do some blended sounds. She became aware of that and adapted my letter people, how many remember those? The letter people, Mr. T for teeth, and was able to kind of show me the German word and then the American word so I could understand the differences in pronunciation and spelling. If, she wasn't aware of that, and she didn't understand that, and this was an amazing kindergarten teacher way back in 1976, it would have been more confusing for me. Acknowledging that that's the foundation I'm coming from, and in order to get to where my fellow American students are, I needed a little boost. I needed a little bit of adaptation. But let me tell you something, having that and then learning American civics has me sitting right here. So it's really important that we learn to marry those cultural components, where are students coming from, with the standards that we want them to learn. Not everyone's starting up here. I started down here and had to learn a little bit more, a little bit extra. And what's really amazing is my mom learned along with me, and she's very, very engaged now in the American political system and policy and ideas. So I think when we're thinking about cultural education, and I was going to say some of this when Mr. Harris comes up, we're not only educating the student who may be newly arrived, who may be in a dysfunctional situation, some of that is trickling down to their family and their parents, and that is really, really supercritical. So the more we can do that, the more we can spend time sort of, where is the student at? at, how do I get them to where their, their other students are, is so much better, you know, and I hope you would sort of embrace this, this concept of culturally responsive teaching. It really has to do with where is the student with their family, language, culture, financial situation, living situation, it goes way beyond sort of what we're hearing in the media, if that makes sense, and I appreciate your time listening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? We need to move on. So, anything else? There is a thought here that possibly, you know, we can talk more about the teacher evaluation maybe in our summer retreat and share gets more, maybe, you know, how you brought in the teachers about the time this past year, past retreat, maybe bring in some teachers. Anyway, just thoughts, just wanted to say that, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is our Level Up Virginia updates and this is with Dr. Jameson.
All right.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm mindful of time and I'm also losing my voice, so if I speak in a different tone than what you've heard, it's not from a lack of energy, I'm just trying my best. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Riggs, Vice Chair Weems, members of the School Board and Dr. Robertson. My name is Robert Jameson and I am the Executive Director for the Office of Student Support Services. This afternoon, I'll provide an overview of the Level Up Virginia Initiative, the events associated with this initiative and the work done in Virginia Beach City Public Schools aligned with these events. To begin, I'd like to share some data from the class of 2023. These data lay the foundation for our presentation today as we will be discussing access to college and career resources in alignment with the Level Up Virginia Initiative. The first, excuse me, the first percentage is student reported and is a data point we collect each year. In 2020 and 2021, 86% of students reported that they would be attending a four-year, two-year or trade school upon graduating from high school. So it has been discussed by board members and members of our senior staff, we do see a shift in the data towards more students pursuing immediate employment upon graduating from high school. For scholarships, we are approaching pre-pandemic totals. For example, the class of 2023 was offered more than two times the amount offered to the class of 2020 and the amount of accepted money is almost double the amount of what was accepted in 2020. Students, families and school staff are working hard to ensure the class of 2024 eclipses the $100 million mark in offers. Additionally, we are proud to announce the class of 2023 had a total or eight, had eight total appointments to the United States Coast Guard, Merchant Marine and Naval Academies. So what is Level Up Virginia? Level Up Virginia is a statewide initiative led by the State Council of Higher Education for Virginia and the Virginia Department of Education. Their mission is to increase post-secondary readiness, enrollment and completion for all students in the Commonwealth. The initiative is committed to making college access information easily understandable and accessible for students of all backgrounds. Although there is a focus on college, career-related skills and activities remain a focus for Level Up. From apprenticeships, certificate programs, military enlistment and trade schools, Level Up provides a variety of post-secondary resources. Level Up Virginia emphasizes increasing college access for historically underrepresented and marginalized student groups, including but not limited to rural students, Black and Latinx students and students from lower socioeconomic backgrounds. The initiative recognizes these students face unique challenges in accessing and succeeding in post-secondary education. So their goals are to provide resources, support and information that empower students to overcome challenges and fulfill their potential. So as you hear the description of the Level Up Initiative, I'm certain you hear and can visualize the alignment with our strategic framework and the strategic action agenda. For students' ownership of learning within Compass to 2025, we seek to engage all students in rigorous, authentic and student-centered learning to help them identify their passions, take ownership of their learning and create a plan for pursuing post-secondary goals. Similarly, in VBCPS through the Strategic Action Agenda, we are ensuring all students and staff are invested in the academic and career planning process and understand the role it plays in serving our students and supporting their future aspirations. So given today's topic, I want to take a moment to highlight a few events and programs in VBCPS for your awareness, although not driven by Level Up, which we'll get to in a second. These are fun and exciting experiences for our students that I would like for you to be aware of should that you see them happening in any of our buildings. Each year, avid students take field trips to colleges and universities throughout the state of Virginia. Also at the secondary level, every school conducts a career fair featuring VBCPS and city staff, community partners and businesses to provide information on the local pathways to employment. As you may have heard and known for some of the new board members who want to share this experience, at the elementary level, many of our schools coordinate what's called a career wax museum, along with some parades. Their career wax museums are usually done through a collaboration between school counselors and language arts instruction. School counselors lead fourth or fifth grade students through an age-appropriate career interest inventory, then through language arts, students research and write about a career interest. For the wax museum, students prepare a short presentation outlining the career of interest, the education or training required for the career and why the student selected this career. On the day the museum opens, the fourth and fifth grade students dress up like a professional from the field and when students from lower grades enter the museum, they press a button for the student to come to life and share what they learned. An example of this activity is depicted in that bottom picture. In the top picture, you see the Windsor Woods Touch a Truck Parade. Navy divers were doing math problems with students on the window of that dive tank and emergency services, fire department, military and police vehicles entered the bus loop for students from each grade level to engage with staff and learn more about the various jobs. The middle picture shows a new program that we have started this year in a partnership with the Central Library, or with the library. The picture you see is actually from the event in November and the city's library department and the Office of Student Support Services are working together to offer programs to seventh grade students that provide an overview of specific career fields. The events occur at the Central Library and the career fields are determined by student data from our academic and career planning platform, Major Clarity. There will be a total of five programs, each will spotlight two different career options and students sign up in advance for these approximately three-hour field trips. To begin each event, they hear information about a career, then engage in hands-on activities led by the career field representatives and students break for lunch and are given the chance to learn more about the library system and even begin learning more about how to actually get a library card, which we know is a novel idea in today's society. But then they follow the same schedule for the second career representative and a maximum of 84 students may attend each field trip and the field trips will continue. We actually had our second one today with a full total of 84 and then our next ones will be in February, March and April of 2024. Furthermore, city staff, student support services and the support from Ty Harris's office, the Diversity Equity Inclusion, we're working together to provide a larger one-day event this spring and invite students from other grade levels. So looking at Level Up and their activities from finding the best fit to meeting application deadlines to figuring out how to finance it all, the road to post-secondary education can be daunting. To help make this journey smooth, VBCPS and Level Up Virginia offer a series of informational events designed to help students and families pursue educational and career opportunities beyond high school. And in Virginia Beach, we set our timeline for local events to correspond with the statewide Level Up activities. The next few slides will highlight the work done locally this fall and the events to come throughout the winter and spring. Hopefully, this is not as painful to hear as it is to talk through, because I keep hearing the high pitch and I'm like, this has got to be funny for you. VBCPS College Night was held during College Application Week on October 24th, 2023 at the Virginia Beach Convention Center. Over 120 colleges and universities participated and we featured the Access College Foundation, our VBCPS Military Connected School Counselors and the Parent Resource Center. The Access College Foundation conducted two free application for Federal Student Aid, or FAFSA, workshops and in support of Mental Health Task Force recommendations to help de-stigmatize mental health, we actually invited the mental health providers that you see listed on the screen to be a part of this event. And I must say, they were one of the most pop, well, they were the most popular tables outside of the various colleges, you can imagine, they ran out of resources to pass out by the end of the night. For College Application Week, it's a part of a national initiative designed to increase the number of first generation and low-income students pursuing a college degree or other higher education credential. In Virginia, select public high schools across the state coordinate a week of activities that provide their students hands-on college application assistance and resources, including application fee waivers, informational materials and support from post-secondary institutions. The decision to participate is site-based and schools make this decision based on their student needs. This year, four schools officially registered, those being Green Run Collegiate, Green Run, Kempsville and Princess Anne High Schools. However, please know all schools conducted and/or coordinated events such as the Academic and Career Planning Days with specific events for different grade levels, college alumni panels where recent graduates return and share their post-secondary experiences or career experiences, college application workshops during one lunch, TCC onsite application events and additional one-on-one counseling meetings with counselors. So without question, every school in VBCPS is committed to ensuring students have what they need to successfully submit college applications should they choose this path. To give some data, as an additional update for the board and related to College Application Week, this fall, 100% of our seniors met with their school counselors individually to review graduation requirements and discuss post-secondary plans. During these meetings, school counselors shared the notice of senior graduation status forms with students, provided students information on their transcripts and continued discussions on next steps for students to achieve their post-secondary goals. To highlight another example of the Level Up aligned work in VBCPS, our high schools hosted over 300 college representative visits from colleges and universities across the country and for the first time, I'm able to announce a data point of 1,434 seniors submitted at least one college application through the Common App as of November 16th. Please note that each student is able to list multiple schools on their profile, so that's not just 1,400 applications, that's 1,400 plus individual students who applied to then an exponential amount of schools. So happy to be able to promote that today. Want to make sure that goes up. So FAFSA Next is an annual statewide initiative designed to increase completion of the FAFSA throughout the Commonwealth. Virginia Beach City Public Schools knows FAFSA completion is a shared responsibility and is fortunate to partner with the Access College Foundation to offer families help with completing this required form for tuition assistance. With the proposed changes to the FAFSA, it is critical we utilize a team approach to assist our families. So when the application goes live, which is, we keep being told it will be this month, school division staff and our partners are ready to conduct additional information sessions at various on and off-site locations and explore whatever options our families need to successfully submit the FAFSA. For example, in a recent discussion with our communications team and members of senior staff, we discussed the collective need to differentiate and diversify how we communicate information with families. So with family and communications, we are looking to schedule in-person events at local subdivision clubhouses and civic leagues. We will share information through the Interface Alliance to help disseminate resources and publicize events through places of worship and schools will be sending personal invitations via mail to families who we know would benefit from additional resources. All of these steps will be taken in addition to the conventional communications that we send now. So Decision Day, another Level Up event, sometimes referred to as Signing Day or Commitment Day in Hampton Roads, celebrates the success of high school seniors in pursuing post-secondary education or training. High schools and centers across the division celebrate post-secondary plans of all high school seniors through site-based Decision Day activities. During these activities, they place an emphasis on supporting students and making final decisions and reminding them of next steps to enrollment. Beyond school celebrations, the Regional Access Commitment Day event, as well as the 200-plus Men Foundation and Berkel Scholars Events showcase our students' accomplishments each year. So on the horizon, as we wrap up, this semester, in collaboration with TCC, VBCPS will provide a recorded presentation to the community, sharing information on dual enrollment courses and pathways to certificates, credentials and degrees. The presentation will also share information on Transfer VA, an online tool for students and families that lets users know how AP exam scores, dual enrollment coursework and industry credentials will transfer to any two-year or four-year institution in the state of Virginia. Beginning this month, schools are prepping, excuse me, preparing for the 24-25 course selection process and working with students to help them make course selections for next year. So from completing Academy, ATC and Tech Center applications to sharing details about courses, this months-long process is a vital portion for every school year. Enroll and List Employee events at our high schools feature various college and career options for students to explore and school staff will invite the community partners lead information sessions at these events that usually lead up to a school's career fair. The onsite admissions event, as we have done the last three years, will be held in, was updated today, actually February, looking at February 15th. Last year, nearly 40 schools and organizations participated to offer information or admissions decisions to the 113 students who registered. Again, this event went beyond just college admissions and included local employment pathways, pathways, excuse me, like the City of Chesapeake Fire Department, IMS Gears, Norfolk Naval Shipyard, the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office and the Virginia Beach Summer Enrollment, excuse me, Summer Youth Employment Program. In addition to the onsite admissions, Virginia Beach is trying out a new college admissions resource called Green Light Match. With more than 80 participating colleges and universities, Green Light Match allows students to complete and post an academic profile. Once validated by their school counselor, the more than 80 schools review the posted profiles, similar to LinkedIn, and offer admissions decisions to students within two weeks. So no one receives a rejection letter and students have a more flexible path to post-secondary education. Schools are working with students to post their profiles by February 1st, so we will begin learning about their college matches beginning February 12th. We are very excited to see how our students leverage this opportunity. Finally, as noted on the slide, we will have the 2024 scholarship totals by late June and this information will be shared with senior staff, along with schools and the local media. So at this point, I'm sorry, coughing threw me off, like even I'm not coughing. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have and happy to have provided this update for the school board.
Okay. Make this short and sweet, Ms. Brown.
Sure, and I recognize this presentation is about seniors predominantly, but you mentioned that there is a meeting, there was a 100% meeting for seniors with guidance counselors to discuss graduation requirements. A lot of parents have said they have some concerns that this type of stuff isn't happening on the front end. Is that something that we're also working on too? For example, as they're leaving eighth grade or entering ninth grade, are we working-
A great question. So one, be remiss to not say, school counselors, school counselors, not guidance counselors. Thank you. I can talk about that another time. But yes, so beginning, let's say, this school year, there will be rising ninth grade orientations at every one of our high schools, there will be rising sixth grade orientations at all, if not mobile, at most, if not all of our middle schools. In addition to that, there are transition days for our rising sixth graders to then come to the middle schools, work with school staff, underst, begin to understand the school culture, meet with the school counselor so they get a feel for what middle school will be like before they ever step foot. Similarly, for high school, we have those events in the spring. We will then have a summertime or early or midsummer, rising ninth grade, or at that point, they're ninth graders, ninth grade orientation to get them acclimated. There are also open invitations, we started last year having transition meetings, so we would have eighth grade staff meet with ninth grade or high school staff to talk about student needs, student opportunities, programs, courses, and so that information was able to be shared directly with students and then communicated out to families. And we took a similar approach with our fifth grade elementary counselors, meeting with our middle school counselors, kind of did it like speed dating, if you can imagine, through your feeder pattern to then learn a little bit more about the students coming to you. And then, of course, once we open up the next school year, it's an open invitation to meet with your assigned school counselor or any school counselor at that point, but then to your point about proactive measures. So as I mentioned here for course selection process for the 24-25 school year, it is an expectation in our office, we communicate this to the principals, each school counselor is to meet with the student individually to then talk about your course selections for the next school year. So you'll get a chance to ask about course progression, appropriate coursework to consider and then taking those next steps and then we have those parent information nights again to then make sure everyone's getting the information that they could get.
Ms. Manning?
I'll be quick. I'm so pleased to see all of our appointments to our service academies, great job. I just want to make sure that you and your counselors know, so obviously with the West Point Naval Academy, you have to have a congressional senatorial nomination from your actual district.
Correct.
With the Merchant Marine Academy, you can have a nomination outside of your district. Okay, you're plugging that? Okay, great, because applications have been way down-
Down, I know.
-to a lot of these and I think we could get a lot of, a lot more nominations and kids going to the Merchant Marine Academy.
It's, yes. Yes, I know we're short on time. Yes, we can talk about that even more.
Thank you.
I'm excited about that opportunity.
Okay, thank you. If you have any more questions, I'm going to ask you to email them to Dr. Jameson, and we're going to come back with our forecast during our closed session. It'll, we'll start that first, and then we'll go to the closed session after the regular 6:00 meeting. Okay? Are we okay with that? All right, so we are going to go to recess.
Thank you.